You could use the gavel.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance. Thank you very much.
Mr. Big Chance, you could have used the gavel. Actually had a reason.
I think you should have opened it.
Use that later on. Okay. Anyone here for open forum? Goodbye. The forum's closed.
Well, there may be other people coming in at the same.
Well, it's too late. It's closed.
Tells us last meeting.
Want me to play the song? Okay. We are here. John, welcome.
Thank you, man.
Kevin.
Thank you, Warrantful Board Selecting, Chief Officers, our members and other affiliated agencies. I'd like to welcome, have you welcomed John Dizallo, the new East Bridgewater Fire Chief? What on God? And also I'd like to introduce his wife Tammy and his two children over there. Raise your hands because they're their mother. And your parents, your fathers here, and mother.
And my in-laws as well.
If anybody wants to crowd around and come up and get in a position for a picture, this is new time, feel free. And we'll have the town clerk come up and issue the oath of office there.
Hi, how are you?
So I'm going to have you repeat after me. This is my first time doing Fire Chief.
Mine too.
Okay. I apologize. You have to raise your right hand. Okay. Repeat after me. I, John Dizallo.
I, John Dizallo.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the bylaws of the Town of East Bridgewater.
And the bylaws of the Town of East Bridgewater.
I, John Dizallo.
I, John Dizallo.
Promise to impart to my profession.
Promise to impart to my profession.
Standards of quality and integrity.
Standards of quality and integrity.
So that the conduct of the affairs of my office.
So that the conduct of the affairs of my office.
Shall be above reproach.
Shall be above reproach.
And merit public confidence.
And merit public confidence.
In the position of Fire Chief.
In the position of Fire Chief.
I, John Dizallo.
I, John Dizallo.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Occupant upon me.
Occupant upon me.
As Fire Chief of the Town of East Bridgewater.
As Fire Chief of the Town of East Bridgewater.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
In good faith, so help me God.
In good faith, so help me God.
Congratulations.
And as a method of tradition, appointing the fire team to board of selecting the chairman of the board to come around to the badge, Tammy, for the committee.
Thank you.
I didn't prepare anything, but I'm really excited. Members of the East Bridgewater Fire Department, I look forward to working with all of you. I think we're going to develop a good team attitude and spirit. And I'm really grateful for the board as well for choosing me to carry on the legacy here in East Bridgewater. So, thank you. And be safe, everyone.
Say cheese.
Done this once or twice.
East Bridgewater, proud of anyone.
That was planned.
With that, that concludes the ceremony for swearing in chief John. Could the family come on up?
Yes.
And grab some pictures? I guess he's got to sign. Yeah, we'll do it with the flag in the background if you want. And great thanks to the town clerk. You're welcome.
Here, Nina.
Okay.
I'm calling your granddaughter down a couple now.
With who's? Yeah? Okay. Oh, how are they going to fit? I don't know.
Craig. Come on a little bit further up. Right there. Maybe you just come a little bit. Lighten shit this way a little bit. Get a little bit longer. The guy in the box, guy in the box.
Box huge, John.
Smile like he's going to be in a box. All right, I guess this is a little ceremony, so I'd like to get back to their.
Back to work.
Well, does this county amendment, the family state, provide some whole meaning and advice?
Thank you for being so kind.
Yes.
You're forward.
No, John was at the, was at Nina's. Yes, we went out to do a site visit.
Somebody short must have been sitting. My chairs.
They're always, I don't know, everyone just must adjust them.
We need like, you know, in the car, how you have the button you push in the car and your seat goes back to your settings.
Automatic.
Well, I'm sorry, we have more basic cars than that.
Yeah, you don't have a radio.
Yeah, we're going to go back to open forum. Mr. Benvey, I think you want to.
Good evening, my name is Tom Benvey, formerly of Satcham Rock Avenue. But Dave, I wish I knew those stairs were going to go taller and steeper when I bought the place 40 years ago.
We tried to explain that. I don't know why you weren't listening.
And those chairlifts have a whip lever, so we had to believe.
That we didn't explain.
So, anyway, I'm here to represent the Committee for the Patrolman Albert Secosia Memorial. And it consists of Paul Canal, the American Legion Post 91 Commander, Larry Davidson, former East Bridgewater Police Sergeant, and Miles Hager from the Commercial Club, Vice President, and myself. And we started back in October trying to get a memorial made for Patrolman Albert Secosia. For those that don't know, on September 30th, 1966, he and a group of other police officers were called to the Castle Loma Lounge for disturbance. And when trying to break up the disturbance, someone grabbed his nightstick and beat him to death. He died in the parking lot. And he is on the Washington DC Fallen Officers Memorial, as well as the one in Boston, but as of yet, not East Bridgewater. So that has been corrected. And first, thank you to the board and the town manager, and especially Chief Jenkins, for helping us get through this process. But now, it's done. So, we'll have a dedication ceremony on May 17th at 11 o'clock in the morning. Originally, we wished to put it on the Town Common, but that, that's kind of a historical grounds, and it should remain the way it is. So we moved it to a new location next to the Town Hall. And it'll be installed next Monday. And it overlooks the police department, so it's a great location. You can look at the memorial and the police department's in the background. And it consists of three stones, basically with Albert Secosia's information and also thanking not only Albert Secosia, but all the first responders in our town, past and present. This isn't just about him, it's just saying thank you for everybody who's ever been involved. And I can personally say, my family has needed them a number of times, and they've come through every time. So we want to invite the town to show up and show their appreciation to Albert Secosia and his family. His family is flying in from all over to be part of this dedication. So again, an open invitation. We thank everybody with their generosity. We've almost reached our goal with donations, and we're quite sure we will by the time the ceremony starts. So we just want to thank everybody in town and invite them. It'll be in front of the Town Hall. Originally, we were going to have it in the common where the memorial is, but now it'll be in the parking lot where the stone will be placed. And again, the plan is Monday, they will be here to put it in place. So one of the things I found during this whole process was how many people didn't even realize East Bridgewater had a line of duty death. But from this point on, everybody will know and remember it. So again, we want to thank everybody and invite everybody to attend the ceremony.
What time's that going to be, Tom?
11 o'clock.
All right. Same time we open the polls, I think. John, are you all set with this? You want to add anything?
Just a shake of the head, that's good enough.
Okay. All right, Tom.
All set?
All set, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Moving along rapidly, Christopher Buckley, Veteran Service Agent for the Town of East Bridgewater.
Almost six years.
Really? Doesn't seem that long.
We're just going to be having so much fun.
Doesn't seem that long.
So there are many updates for us, especially, you know, being this time of year. First things first, I wanted to touch base. It's going to be another great Memorial Day service, the 26th, 10 a.m. over here at the common. One of the things that we do every year is we read off the names of our East Bridgewater veterans that passed away over the calendar year. We're roughly over 20, almost 25 at this point. And did want to make a point this year, it is, for the second year in a row, mainly Vietnam veterans. And I say that as, that is the lion's share of the veterans in our town that need the assistance. There are other groups, but as everything goes, it's, it's, it's now, you know, helping them either live out the rest of their days at home, or find the best facility to suit their, their family, and, you know, make sure they have all the medals and the bonuses and the annuities and the tax abatements and everything that they, that they need. So, then, but like I said, same thing we've been doing every year. I want to thank the Patriotic Committee, they've done a phenomenal job. Since I've come on, we've worked every year at this event. And, you know, it's one team moving in the same direction. So again, a lot, a lot of thanks for them to setting this up. Next thing I wanted to update you guys on is the state, over the last year, has stood up another department. And so you have E O V S at the state level. That was Department of Veteran Services prior to Governor Haley coming on. Now, the state legislature later has stood up a Department of the Office of Veteran Advocacy. And one of the main things that they're able to help us out with is third-party issues where our veterans are running into problems, and either the state doesn't have the answer, or it's really time-consuming at my level. So I can, I can reach out to our representative, who represents the southeast here. And we've worked very well with her. Her name's Truck DeCoste. And she's been on, she's been on roughly since January. And this report that I have for you tonight was comprised of the information they've been able to pull since they came on. A lot of it is percentage state and county-wise. One of the things that I do want to point out is the report states that East Bridgewater has roughly 706 veterans. I am tracking on my spreadsheet in my office of 822 at this point. And again, I asked where that number came from. I'm glad to see we're over it, but like, where did it come from? So Plymouth County has a percentage of 5% across the board in Plymouth County. So that's where they got to 706. So we're a little, we're a little above county average. And, and that definitely, you know, helps out when it comes to benefits and everything like that. Another number is it, it said 4% or 26% or 26 number-wise veterans here in East Bridgewater unemployed. That was kind of, you know, kind of taken back. I know of two or three off the top of my head for certain reasons, because I run different programs in town. So we started game planning, and if a veteran is, let's just use my upcoming age of 45, and he or she is 100% disabled, does not work, stays at home, takes care of the kids, and their spouse works with their disability and what the spouse works, brings in, that's enough income for the fam, to support the family. And they're factored into the unemployment number. So it's not 26 people in East Bridgewater looking for employment and need employment. So with that being said, there's a lot more, there's a lot more wiggle room there. And like I said, that was one of the numbers, as I was going through the report, that just noticed a little off. And, you know, we were able to kind of pinpoint where the discrepancy could be. But then, the other couple things I wanted to point out was for every $1 of East Bridgewater spends on their veteran community, they get four back in the economic value. And then, when it comes to non-municipality benefits, and what this is, is the annuities and, and all of that extra at the state level, for every $1, we bring 13 back into the community. And we're just going to continue to grow that. Like I said, we have roughly 820 veterans here in East Bridgewater. About 150 of them, I have sent out male correspondence to and haven't received back. Everybody else, I pretty much have accountability for, which is good, because now we can start targeting different age groups and, you know, in different parts of town to see what we can do as far as getting a hold of everybody. And that's definitely something that, you know, we'll be doing over the next year to, you know, to, to get a hold of. One of the things we will be doing is, starting May 28th, the Wednesday after Memorial Day, every last Wednesday, we're going to do a coffee hour on the second floor. And the library and the COA have supported me the entire time. One of the main reasons I wanted to do this was to see if we could get a little bit more of a catchment area. You know, there's certain people that go to the library, and there's certain people that go to the COA. And then we have a certain sector in town that don't go to either. So by doing this, we're going to try to catch the majority of those, those people that we have not contacted yet. And, and that's definitely, you know, the plan moving forward. So, and then the last thing I have is, wasn't able to be here, but Nelson, who is out celebrating his birthday with his parents, he was very appreciative and was really blown away by the certificate you guys were able to sign, and we presented it to him early. He appreciates that he's going on to work for the city of Taunton with his GIS degree that he was able to get the last couple of years. So, but he really appreciates it, and he's been a, definitely a value add. The things we've been able to do in my office over the last two years, because I've been able to, you know, have him helping me out. And now, we've got, you know, more people in the office, more volunteers, and so definitely a, a big thanks to him.
Chris, one more thing on the coffee hours. You know, we had talked a little bit about that. We may also try and set one down occasionally down at the Y also. So we can, there is a, a room down there now, which would be perfect to set up something if we, because we started a couple of years ago, the Veterans Day, Veterans Week lunch down, breakfast down there. So maybe we can try to move something into that direction, you know, once we, once we get started there.
Definitely. And another thing that we'll be looking to do towards the fall, probably the month of October, is we're going to be putting on a lunch for the veterans who work for the town. That mainly consists of, of fire and PD. I have reached out to the other town departments, and if we, if there are any other veterans within, you know, that work for the town, definitely. And so what we'll be doing is we'll be sponsoring a lunch, October timeframe, set it up to where the first responders can, you know, attend and all that stuff.
Do I get grandfathered? No.
I'm seeing two other people at your table shake their heads, so, I mean, you can always write in.
You made your choice.
Right.
What a choice it's been.
We need that key too, as soon as it's over.
I'm not at the clock until the 17th, I'm sorry. And I have the duplicates already made. Just a couple of words. Nelson, he is just a super, super gentleman. Again, he's going down to Rainham.
Uh, Taunton.
But I believe very shortly he's being deployed.
Yes.
To Kuwait.
As of September, October.
Yeah.
He's going to send us his information.
Continue and.
We'll keep, keep in touch with him.
That's absolutely fantastic. He, he's just a super person. Every time I came by here, when you were at the office most of the time, he, he was just hauling down everything. He just, he knew what he was doing. He, he was just so fantastic with people. I just wish him safe in Kuwait.
Definitely, we'll definitely pass it on.
Which he did volunteer for. So, appreciate it. Okay.
Can I say anything else?
Any questions?
Yeah, just, no, just, again, you know, I think, you know, what he, everything he had done at that office is obviously a reflection of what you've done over there. You know, we're impressed quite a bit. But I wanted to touch on our conversation the other day, a little bit about the intern that you have coming in this summer. She's, I think that's, that's important for, for anyone that doesn't know.
Oh, definitely. So the next two weeks, we lucked out. So Nelson's going to be here, his last day's going to be the 16th of this month. And the next two weeks, Allison Hopkins, who's a Clemson University student, she's a social, social science and public policy major. She needed a, kind of a social work-based internship over the summer, that's why she reached out to us. She'll be in the office Monday through Thursday, starting today, so her first day was today. She was able to kind of shadow with Nelson, see what he does and that sort of thing. And she'll be here through, through the month of July, and then a couple of weeks in August. And really, you know, one of the things that we've set up, and this is the first time we've been able to do this, Nelson's here through the VA Work Study Program. Allison's here because we have the volunteer policy, and we're able, we were able to, you know, work on that. And I know everybody did a great job getting that up and running. And then now, what we can do is now offer, she's pretty much taking, getting summer credit because she's working in the office. And that, the only reason, the only reason that's able to happen is because, one, she reached out, and two, we have the, the means to, to be available to that. So like I said, I appreciate it. And she's going to, like I said, she'll be where, one to four, most days. Some days we'll have some events, and she'll be flexible, especially after, after Nelson, you know, moves on and everything. So, and then, so she's got that. And then we also have, Nikki is volunteering. A lot of you guys know she works for the schools. She'll be doing nine to 11, Tuesday and Thursday. And then Claudia, our tax work office, doing 11 to one on Thursdays. And she's here till she completes her 100 hours. So really, this month, leading up to Memorial Day, with all the calls we normally get, we've got a lot of representation in the office to allow me to continue to do what I'm doing. And, you know, we get everybody taken care of with the grave requests and the flags and, and all the, the normal upkeep that comes around Memorial time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. I, I know you're here to talk about veterans, but could you just for a minute, talk about passport applications? Because right now, with the Real ID being required, there are people that are trying to get a passport. It's easier to get a Real ID if you already have a passport. Can you just explain to people what your hours are for that?
Definitely. Thank, thank you for bringing that up. We are actually due to the Memorial Day holiday and the Real ID influx. We are booked.
They passed it 20 years ago, but nobody saw it coming.
Exactly.
Didn't care.
And so now, we are actually booked up, the next time we're booking appointments is the 9th of June.
Wow.
So we are booked up the next three weeks solid. We have Memorial Day, which is that Monday, and then I am down the Cape training with the NVSOA the first week of June. And so what we've done, I've got everybody, you know, their talking points, because the last thing I want is somebody to call and give my volunteers a hard time because they can't get a, an appointment. And, and just explain to everybody, the reason we can't book a week or two out is because everybody's coming to us very live, I think I had two people over the last month that actually needed it before August. Everybody else is, I don't want to miss, I don't want to mess with the RMB, we're just coming to you. So that's a lot. And the good thing, and I know Carol, they, you've been heard on your side, but the four to six weeks has been solid.
Yeah.
I mean, the State Department, when it comes to processing passports, they're, they're not messing around. We have no, they'll send us a memo every time there's a hiccup in the system. We've been. We've been four to six weeks for a year and a half. So, a lot of what's going on outside, we're just trying, it's, it's a lot of conversations in the office about calming people's nerves and they're worried and they're nervous and, you know, it's just kind of bringing them back down to earth saying, no, this is, this is an actual easy, easy process. I don't know about you, but we've...
It's easier than the Real ID, which is ironic, but...
People have come in with, with whole, whole folders and they've just thrown it on my desk. Here you go. And I'm like, I need your passport or I need your birth certificate and your ID. They're like, what about this? I'm like, I don't need any of that. And that's the, you know, the, the kind of misinform that, that everybody's going on. But, but we're doing the best we can and we're going to start, not going to be scheduling anybody out that long, but we'll probably wait till about the nineteenth of the month and then start scheduling for June, as opposed to try to schedule right now being six weeks out.
And you could always tell people too, if, if they need an appointment right, we have West Bridgewater Public Library, I know, does passports. I don't know how busy they are.
Yeah.
If they want to drive to Carver, they can come see me.
Well, definitely, we've got, so if you go to travel.state.gov and you put our zip code in, it'll pop up my office and then it'll pop up everybody else's. And the volunteers have it right on their desk. We're not taking any till June, but, and then they go down the list and, and call.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great job as usual. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, guys. Have a great day.
Thank you.
All right, bud. Thanks. Join us, please.
Hi, friends. Hi.
Hello.
Welcome. Welcome. How are you guys doing today?
Now that you're here, great.
Thank you, Mr. Sheedy.
Wow.
Um, so for anyone who doesn't know who I am, I'm Jamie Kenny. I'm town council and labor council for the town. I have served this board for thirteen years now.
Really?
Thirteen years.
We don't, we don't get any, you know, no pins.
No problems. Just smooth with it. You already are at the discount rate. You already are. Don't tell your friends. But I'm here to talk about the personnel policies. So, as you know, we've been talking about the personnel policies. So just to kind of reframe, for anyone who's out, out there listening, we have public employees and most of our public employees are covered by collective bargaining agreements. So the way that it works in terms of the hierarchy is, obviously, we have federal laws and then we have collective bargaining agreements, which under our Massachusetts general laws carry the weight of the same as state law per 150E unless it's a subordinate statute that's a new amendment in 150E subsection seven D. And then policies come below those collective bargaining agreements and act as a gap filler for anything that's not specifically covered in collective bargaining agreements. So just as we frame these issues, two things. Number one, these policies are subject to impact bargaining with all of our unions. So once they're passed, they're going to be passed hopefully with that notation that they're going to be subject to impact bargaining. And I'll come back before this board in the event that there's something that needs to be changed, once we complete that impact bargaining process. So, once again, just in terms of what this is, it's really a notice provision for our employees to talk about what the expectations are in terms of some of these issues, to make sure that we're in compliance. And one of the things that we talk about, when we talk about compliance, is something like the Pregnancy Discrimination Act, which came into effect in 2018, has certain notice requirements that we're obligated to give our employees to make sure that they understand that this, these are our obligations as an employer in Massachusetts. We wanted to make sure that everything is updated to be in compliance with all those different acts that operate within the workplace. So, this was an update that was much needed, in my opinion, to make sure that we were in compliance and that we are making sure that we have processes set forth in easy-to-understand and ascertainable language for our employees. As everyone knows, individuals all come with every different types of workplace needs sometimes, and we have specific processes in the event that they come to the town, they come to Charlie, they come to Rebecca, and they have a certain need as an employee, we get to work with them. But this outlines some of those processes so that it's really well-known. Because again, our job as the employer is to make sure that everything is consistent and equal in terms of our treatment of our employees and that people know what their rights are as workers in Massachusetts and what our obligations are as an employer. So this is really just outlining those items and really giving us a clear roadback, roadmap on how to navigate that employer, employee relationship. Because we work in the municipal sector, our stakeholders, our workplaces are, they do encompass more appointed officials and elected officials, which, you know, which makes it a little bit more complicated sometimes, as we all know. So we're on, we have a unionized environment as well, which makes it a little bit more complicated. So these legal issues kind of intersect and overlap, and that's why we really look at these policies in a way that is mindful of what is the state law, what are our collective bargaining obligations state? And then number three, how are we making sure that this is message to our employees in a way that's really ascertainable for them and meeting them where they are in terms of their specific needs? So, as you can see throughout the policies, there are different options for employees. If they need to talk to someone, they've identified Rebecca has, who's been doing a great job, Charlie's office, who have been doing a great job. If there's any specific needs that employee has, they can talk to them and we can work with them to make sure that we are meeting all of our obligations. Okay? Some of the other things that we talked about before, there was some language in your prior personnel policies that had to do with some longevity pay, which we've had now bifurcated that and pushed it off to individual letters for each individual who potentially would be eligible for that pay. So just let me say again, for the record, that nobody's losing anything in terms of your implementation of these new policies, that every single employee has been accounted for and letters have been drafted for each individual employee in the event that they are subject to something like that, that specific longevity pay. We've addressed that specifically with them. Because it's a public meeting, obviously, we can't address any individual employees in this, but we have addressed that need. And I can answer any questions that you have on any of these policies. But again, this will be hopefully adopted tonight, subject to impact bargaining, and then the final form would come back in again, if there's any modifications that we need to make. Okay?
Question, Carol?
Nope, I read the letters. Appreciate that.
Of course.
No questions on the policy. I went, you know, through it and then we had our meeting. My question would be, how long does the union have to, to review and then come back to us on something?
So we have an obligation to provide notice and opportunity, right? And so as, we love all these, these legal terms, it's a reasonable time period, right? So what, what does that mean?
Right.
Right? So usually we give people seven days to get back to us to effectuate their rights. So if they want to talk to us, they can. So a letter will go out to each union head saying, we're writing to them in their capacity as a union official, and they have so many days to talk to us about this. And we'll talk about implementation schedules that make sense once we have those meetings underway. So, they have to, we have to give them notice and opportunity, which will be those letters with a draft policy after you've adopted tonight. And then when, if they want to exercise any of those impact bargaining rights after they've reviewed the policy, we will set up a meeting after that. So, again, there's not a precise term in terms of the collect, our collective bargaining obligations with that. It's notice and opportunity and then reasonable.
And have you seen, Jamie, have you seen any pushback in, in other towns with, with the union and policy?
It's really just about, like, it's really about the fact that people need to, to again, be told that this is not going to change or modify any of their collective bargaining agreements. So again, when we talk about the hierarchy and we will reframe this again with the unions, this is below your CBA. This is below your, even if you have a standard operating procedures in any of your, in any of your departments, like, we have a lot of rules and we're in accredited, we're in accredited department. So for police, like, this is going to operate below any of those SOPs below, and it's a gap filler. So when the, it's going to go collective bargaining agreement, SOPs or any rules or regulations that already apply to their departments, gap filler below that. So if there's silence, silence, this will operate as a gap filler. And again, even when the law changes, we still have that impact bargaining obligation with unions, even though we don't necessarily have control over those changes in the law. So it's a really interesting dynamic where the state legislature makes the determination that we're going to change something and then as a municipality, we then have the obligation to impact bargain that with our unions, even though it wasn't our, wasn't our idea at all. It was the state legislature's idea, but we still have that carry with that, that impact bargaining obligation. So, I, we always have a good working relationship with all these union officials and we are hoping that we'll come to the table with them. I've done this in many places at this point in my career. So each individual person and group sometimes has their own issues or their own concerns and it's really talking through and collaborating about what those are and then talking about that implementation schedule and also assuaging any fears around, this is going to radically change anything that's existing. So, as you all know, we really pride ourselves on having good relationships with people and hope that, you know, we'll be able to, we've always been able to get through it before and my hope is that we'll be able to get through this and communicate through any issues that there are.
Thank you.
Does the motion need to reflect the collective bargaining impact as part of the motion?
Correct. Right. So the motion should, the, the motion, I would offer that the motion should state that adopt, adoption, subject to any impact bargaining, changes.
Okay. I make a motion to adopt the ver- the final version of the personnel policies, subject to any impact bargaining changes.
Second.
Can you further discussion? Are there those in favor?
Aye.
Before I leave tonight, I would just like to say that Mr. Sheedy...
Oh, boy.
This is your last meeting.
It is?
It's my understanding.
No one told me that.
That it's your last meeting.
You still have to come to town meeting.
Yeah, right.
Town meeting next week. You got to show up for that.
Maybe.
Come, come to your house and get your...
As I said, I've had the honor and the pleasure of working with you for thirteen years. And I love the quote, "That humble leaders inspire." You just have a humility and a grace that you meet every human that you interact with. And you have inspired me and you have inspired so many people, whether or not they verbalize it or not. So I stand in honor to you and in gratitude to you tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's why she gets the big bucks.
Thank you.
You got to hug that out.
I am. We're going to continue to have fun. He just, it's start, it's just started.
Oh, shit.
Special visitors.
Oh, God.
Don't look at them all.
I hate them.
Dave Sheedy, this is your life.
Right. Won't be after, won't be after I get through I do.
You looking for an escape hatch?
Yeah.
Right under the desk. We always said we should have had a hatch put in under there, but...
I guess welcomes in order. And thank you. It's been a pleasure for the last fifty-eight years, I think. But I do want to introduce my family first and it's nice to see them speaking to each other and hear all the... Oh, no, no, let me start. Kathy. Kathy, my wife. Who would have known, back in nineteen seventy-seven, when we had a major problem trying to buy our house and live in it, that this would continue because I had to get onto the planning board in nineteen eighty-one to figure out what the hell they were talking about. Kathy seems to have a problem with concerns about my time management.
I wonder why.
I don't understand why I get these clasques around the house. You know, this is a job up here, this is a job here, you know, see what you, but the ones that are out of state, Kathy, I, I don't understand why you think I'm going to take those. Next to Kathy is DJ. He's DJ'd the family. He's, he's a correctional officer, has been for over thirty years. They call him Dave because their corrections, two syllables is too much for them, so they just call him Dave. The good thing about him, he's in correction, so he gives us a weekly update on all our family and friends that are incarcerated. Just so that, you know, Kathy understands that they're doing okay, don't worry about it. Next to him is Diane, our first. And she's just the sweetest person in the world, sometimes. The problem she is, she's one of those people, if they say, you know, you need something, she'll give it to you. She now holds the state record for flipping people off because they might, you know, slow down our speed up too much, you know? But we still appreciate her. Then we have the youngest, Daniel. Daniel didn't understand, when he was about six or seven months old, Kathy and I, that's when I decided to run for the planning board the first time. So we would stroll him around, delivering little cards that had vote for me and all the town numbers on the back of it. It was a cardboard, not a piece of concrete, just in case you were thinking that.
Tablet?
So what we didn't, what we didn't realize is he must have felt that way back then because Daniel just got elected to the Norton School Committee for the fourth time.
Times, right? And he's now the chair.
I clearly didn't learn my lesson coming down.
You weren't paying attention.
One of the problems that Kathy has with this is, she seems to think, just because I'm on the select board and he's on the school committee, we may have discussions about budgets and stuff like that. So Kathy thinks it's a lot better when Daniel's kind enough to come by and say, hey, how you doing, guys? Kathy says, could you guys go outside? So the neighbors can hear the discussion because she doesn't want to have anything to do with it. And I'm going to miss those discussions because the neighbors call all the time to take us aside and tell us, you know, what they thought about it, so. He's the happiest one that I'm getting off the board. I can't thank everyone. It would be impossible. I do want to thank all the people I served with, including these two clowns.
The feeling's mutual.
And the select board office. Charlie's still relatively new, but he, he knows he's better off than next door. Rebecca, I can't say enough. Couple of years ago, if people remember, I had an office with the rest of the select board. So, so I took a little vacation and I came back and she's all settled in in that office and I have a little desk over here, you know, in front of Lee. You know, and that's great. So what happens? I take another vacation, I come back, the desk is gone and I have a TV tray over there. So I can sit there and, you know, play with a pen or something because that's all the room we have. So, thank you for caring. Lee is the sweetest person in the world. Every day she comes in, it's the same thing, what do you need today? And after a half hour of explaining all the problems I'm having, you know, she says, okay, I have to get to work now. Okay, but you guys are great. Thank you. Chris, I'll still be working with you as a veteran. I still have connections, don't worry about it. And I'm not leaving everything. I'm just, hopefully if this board appoints me, I'll go to the Council on Aging as a member of their board in a couple of weeks. Jamie, if I don't get a point, then I don't know who I'm calling. So the good thing about that, they don't have to worry about me. I already have my office picked out upstairs. You won't even know I'm there. But if you want to console them for the next couple of weeks, then feel free to do so. I see we have our state representative, my successor is in the building. Catherine's a wonderful person. We've already had, the good thing is we've already had disagreements about everything. No, not everything, a couple of things were right, the weather. But she's, she's going to be huge for this board and I wish her well. Allison has been a stronger person for East Bridgewater that we've ever had and we know that will continue. The Senator's not here.
Apologies from our office, but Jim Breton is here. I have the honor.
Well, Jim, if you just pass it on to the Senator.
Because rumor has it that you might be stepping down.
Yeah, it's, it's factual. Yeah, it's, it's factual. But if you, the senator, I always see, a lot of people know I wear part-time for a funeral home. In the, I see the senator over there a lot. He's well-known over there. One of the things, I haven't seen him for quite a while now, and he's always usually there when there's middle-aged men being serviced and stuff like that, so I don't know what's happening to all those people. I think maybe we're going to call him Whitey Brady from now on, because I think he's doing his own services outside. But we appreciate everything he does to support the town.
Where are you at, Chad?
No, I'm at Russell Pika.
I was at Russell.
Yeah. So, thank you, everyone. It's been a pleasure. Good night.
Do I need to be on the microphone or can I stand?
You should be able to just stand. You can do whatever you want.
Can I hold it?
Nope.
You want me to put it right here? Hopefully you can hear me. Exactly. You can come up here. I promise I won't bite. Kathy, I'm sorry now. You're going to have them on Monday nights, which, I apologize.
And don't send them down here.
Before I read this resolution, Dave, I just want to thank you. You have been a huge supporter for me and for this community and a strong advocate. And I know the one that's coming in after you is going to do a great job, but you left really big shoes to fill, and she would even attest to that. You are a bit of a jokester, but I know how much you genuinely care about this community. You feel every heartache this community has felt, you have felt every good times, bad times, and everything in between. And your family can definitely attest to how much you have given, blood, sweat, and tears. You definitely deserve this. You, I don't know why you want to continue serving on boards, and I don't know if Nancy is going to, you know, kick you out before she leaves, but it's okay.
That's why she's retiring.
Yeah.
She got word early and this was this.
This was very, it's a little sus.
But I want to say thank you. Thank you for being a mentor to me. Thank you for being someone that I could call and count on when I had questions about what the hell am I doing up there and, and how can I better East Bridgewater? And you were always, and I still believe will continue even after this, should be a little bit of a pain in my butt, and, and to really continue to advocate. And I know that that won't go away, and I'm looking forward to the next chapter that you have, a little bit more times, maybe to do the honey do list that you probably won't complete. It's okay. So I do have a, so I do have a resolution here.
Can I keep you on speed dial?
Yeah, I think you will. I might be like, maybe number three at this point. I think you called Catherine a little bit more than me now.
She's around.
Hey! I'm growing a baby here, you know?
I understand that. I'm trying to be nice.
So I do have a resolution here, and the resolutions in the House are read into record, so you'd be able to see this in record on this day. I know, right? It's amazing.
How do I use my phone?
Mag a reader's aid.
Yes.
So if you don't mind, I'd like to read it. This resolution recognizing David Sheedy on his years of service to the town of East Bridgewater. Whereas Dave, David Sheedy concludes his final term as select board member in the town of East Bridgewater on May 5th, 2025. And whereas Dave, David Sheedy's, I don't even know how to say David. It's like hard, you know, the double syllables, Dave.
Compared to what you've called me, we'll settle for that.
Devotion to the well-being of the East Bridgewater community is displayed through his service to the town, which dates back to 1979. And whereas David has served the town in an abundance of roles, including being a member of the Bicentennial Committee, Constable, Planning Board Member, Plymouth County Advisory Board Designee, along with other municipal roles over his years of service. And whereas David has made a profound impact on those who have worked with him, and he has won the respect and admiration of the residents of the town of East Bridgewater and the community, in the county of Plymouth, throughout his years of distinguished service. Sorry, you have a mouthful right there. And whereas David's commitment to serve the town of East Bridgewater and his ability to garner such admiration from the town's community would not have been possible without the continued support of his wife Kathy and his family. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts House of Representatives hereby congratulates David Sheedy on the occasion of his retirement from East Bridgewater and further extends to him its sincere best wishes for continued success in all his endeavors. And be it therefore resolved that the copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Clerk of the House of Representatives to David Sheedy, signed by the Speaker of the House, the Clerk of the House, myself, and Representative Bridget Pluff. Congratulations, David.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I have something from the State Senate. But before I get into it, it's a lot, first of all, it's a lot shorter than the resolution. I want to congratulate you. And on a personal note, Dave, I would see Dave, and Dave would say, do you think the senator can get us $75,000 for maybe some fireworks or something going on? But then I would see Dave and he would say, Jim, is there a chance we need a million dollars for a soccer field? I says, Dave, I think you're short on that. Those start at 1.5, because I used to install them, you know? So, so, but anyway, it's, you have to ask, or you're not going to get any help, you know what I mean? I mean, I'm going to read this, and congratulations, anyway. All right? I have the honor of, this is an official citation, so you're already who's who in America, who's who in Massachusetts, whereas that resolution brings you into the, right into the clerk's office and the, into the ledger. From the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the State Senate, official citation, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Select Board Member David Sheedy in recognition of your retirement after 20 years of committed service to the town of East Bridgewater, Massachusetts. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, our continued success, this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. And it is signed by Karen Spilka, Senate President, Michael Hurley, the Clerk of the Senate, and proudly signed by Michael D. Brady, State Senator Michael D. Brady, May 5th, 2025. Congratulations.
Dave, the fun doesn't end there, so I want you to sit down, though. You're way too old to be standing this long. Come on, sit down, because I think it's only fair that me and Carol both have something to, something to leave you with as far as some words, for sure.
That scares me in my own night.
Want to say a few things?
Oh, you want me to go first?
Yeah, sure.
I didn't actually prepare anything, but you know me off the cuff.
Yeah, right.
Not a problem. It's been seven years since I was elected to this board.
It might seem longer.
I know. Time's going to fly now, though.
Yeah.
You know, when I came on this board with no elected official experience, I was your constituent, and then I was your colleague. And you treated me with kindness and respect and showed me the ways that I was wrong, mostly, occasionally when I was right. And we developed a friendship that extends far beyond the collegiality that this board has always had, in my experience. And, you know, Peter joining us has made us even stronger, and it's just been such a privilege to learn from you and experience, you know, your wisdom and your leadership through this time. So I thank you for all of that. It is not going to be easy to continue without you. Who is going to tell me how to open a public hearing? Because seven years in and I still can never remember how to do it. So you may be hearing from me.
You'll be fine.
And now, we can talk.
Oh, could I take your number? I don't think I have it.
We can talk outside of meetings after next week. So that, that is the silver lining that I really just thought of. So thank you for everything.
You're welcome. So... Before you start, okay?
This is all sweet.
Let's, let's change the sarcasm from the old guy to the young girl. What the hell are you talking about? You weren't even born then.
Right.
Oh, we're going to have fun with that.
Stop on that, okay?
That's how we start.
We're absolutely going to have fun with that.
Let that go.
Sage of my grandson.
You're stealing our thunder before we even get to using it. But seriously, Dave, so, you know, opening up this certificate of appreciation signed by me and Carol and Katie, it's, the list is, I mean, it's, there's so many committees and boards and things that you've done in this town, it's just overwhelming. The writing's so small that even if I wanted to read it, I couldn't. I mean, it's, it's just unbelievable.
Well, let me read it.
But the point being that, you know, you've, you've done so much, even prior to being in this seat, you know, I was told many, many years ago, you know, you come in and you find a place, and if you leave it, better than what you found it. You've achieved so much, and you've done that in so many different areas that it's, it's been, as Carol said, it's been an honor to sit with you for these last five years for me and learn from you as well. You know, the old story was, you know, you don't send Spagoni, you're sending Sheedy because it would get ugly if I go in and you're the guy that can take care of, of everybody and anybody, having that personality that you do. And of course, we joke all the time, and I think that helps in the dynamic. I've said it a million times, this only works in this town because of the three of us and coming from three different backgrounds, three different ideas, and three different personalities. It's been, it's been a pleasure learning from both of you, as well as knowing who each of you are and developing that relationship, because, you know, without that, we wouldn't be able to do as, as much as we've done, at least in these five years. And then prior to that with you, you know, look at the changes that have happened, and it's been, it's been overwhelming, and it's going to be, it's a huge loss. It really is. And I, I say that with all sincerity. Most people know me, I, you know, shoot from the hip and I say it straight. Yeah. And it's, it's definitely going to be, it's going to be a journey now for us to, to get through, especially the fact that there's not a person in this town or in the, in this building that you don't know. I mean, it's, it's overwhelming, you know? So that in itself has led to some great accomplishments, and I just want to say that, you know, in closing, this appreciation certificate doesn't even start to touch the surface of what you've meant to me, as what you meant to the town of East Bridgewater, and we look forward to continuing to see you out there doing your thing and, and making, making this place a better place than you found it, as I said earlier. So David, congratulations.
Thank you.
I think that's a wrap.
No.
It's not a wrap.
Oh, it's not a wrap?
No.
We're going to unwrap?
It's something else to unwrap.
Okay.
But wait, there's more. But this, so this is just a little something from Charlie, me, myself, Carol, and Peter, just to, you know, honor you for your 15 years of dedicated service as a select board member. So that's for you. You can hang it on your wall. Don't knock anybody in the head with that.
Thanks for prefacing that.
What did they say? How can I miss you if you don't go away?
Is that a wrap?
I believe so, unless there's somebody else out there.
Is everything good?
Everyone's good? Thank you. We done? You going into executive?
We can go into executive.
All right.
Very short.
You have nothing to say, right?
No.
Good. All right. That's a wrap, folks. Thank you again. You'll still see me here. Not here, but here.
One more time.
One more time, yeah.
Still got to close the meeting. Town Council. I know.
We'll talk.
You should just go around, because they are going to want to hug you.
Everybody wants to give you a hug.
Yeah, I'm going to hug you.